Good evening. The time is now five thirty-two, and I'd like to call to order the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three Academic Achievement Committee meeting. I am Dr. Zepora Miller, Chair of the Committee and the District Five Representative for the Prince George's County Board of Education. If everybody would please introduce themselves, starting with the board members who serve on this committee, the guest board members, then the Prince George's County Public Schools Administrative Staff, and then the board staff in that order.
Hello, my name is Sheila Adam Stafford. I'm the board member representing District Four.
Hello, my name is Brandon Jackson. I'm the board member representing District Six.
Hello, everyone. My name is Albert Stone Reese. I'm the student member of the Prince George's County Board of Education.
And we have our chair.
Hello, everyone. My name is Judy McInnes Murray, Board Member, Exo Official to this committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Judy White, Chief Academic Officer.
I can go next. Hello, everyone. Doug Strater, Chief of Accountability.
I can go next. Cassandra Lassiter, Associate Superintendent for Elementary Schools.
Good evening. David Curry, Associate Superintendent, Middle Schools, K eights and charters.
I will go next. I'm Felice De Souza, Supervisor of the Office of Monitoring and Accountability.
Good evening. Jamie Bowers, I'm the Director of Testing, Research and Evaluation.
Good evening. Vanessa Weatherington, Director for Strategic Planning and Resource Management.
Good evening. Kia McDaniel, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Lopez Guerrero, Administrative Secretary to the Board Office.
Thank you so much, and thank you, everyone, for being here. Ms. Guerrero, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Dr. Zepora Miller.
Present.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Present.
Mr. Valentine. Mr. Saran Ruiz.
Here.
And Mr. Jackson.
Present.
All right, we have a form.
Thank you. So we'll move to item one point three. May I have a, may I have a motion to adopt the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda?
So moved.
The second.
Second.
Thank you so much. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The agenda, the agenda is adopted. Thank you so much. Let's move on to item one point four, Approval of the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Meeting Minutes. May I have a motion to approve the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
See, we just left the part, everybody.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
These kids gathering around this thing.
The meeting minutes have been approved. We have one registered public speaker. For the public speaker, you have been registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Academic Achievement Committee will listen to your comments. The committee will not address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be muted and you'll be removed from the meeting. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, principal, CEO, deputy superintendent, et cetera. Your adherence to these guidelines will, will enable the public participation process to go smoothly. Ms. Guerrero, is Ms. Shannon Reed in the waiting room?
No, it seems she didn't join.
Oh, all right. So we will move forward with the next agenda item. Just let us know when she joins and maybe she can come at the end. So at this time, we'll move to Agenda Item three point O. Dr. Judith White, I will now yield the floor to you and your team and colleagues to present this evening's agenda items.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'd also like to introduce Dr. Carla Damaro. She had a power search, so she dropped off camera, but she has joined us. She's the Associate Superintendent for our high schools. Also, they are here representing their chief, Dr. Helen Cole. So I always like to acknowledge my colleagues, even if they're not here. So this evening, we've shared our data with you all year long, and so we wanted to come tonight and just talk about the data decision process that we utilize throughout the year. As you can see, I have a whole relay team here because it's not just one team, but we really try to work collaboratively, one with the other, to make decisions, to pass data, to work collaboratively, to ensure that our schools, that we've been very responsive to their needs and that we're assisting them as they work through their school improvement plans. And so what you will find tonight is we'll start with the area of accountability. They will turn it over to another branch in accountability, then to our schools, then to curriculum instruction to follow up. So I want to say, Vanessa, are you sharing your screen?
Yes.
Okay, and then will you drive your screen for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so everyone just indicate next slide for her and she's ready. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Vanessa Weatherington to get us started.
Good evening. So as Dr. White stated, tonight, we will talk about the Strategic Plan Monitoring and Implementation, the School Performance Plan Process, Stat Day, and Curriculum Data Informed Practices. Led by Dr. Strater, I oversee the strategic plan and our monitoring and implementation efforts. As stated last board session, these are our three primary areas of focus when we undergo our strategic plan and implementation monitoring. Our outcome goals, which are the staples of our strategic plan, including educational excellence, excellence in equity, workforce and operational excellence, along with mental health and wellness. From those four goals, our leadership identified three focus areas, which include accelerating achievement in mathematics, improving school climate and culture, and further improving social, emotional learning and mental health. We worked along all of the divisions to identify strategies that are aligned with both those outcome goals and focus areas that also align with our critical success indicators to monitor progress towards achieving our outcomes established in the strategic plan. These are the specific critical success indicators aligned with academic excellence. You can see here we have relevant and challenging curriculum, improving math and reading and language arts, our English Language Learners and Special Education Students Focus, pre-kindergarten readiness, on track for graduation, high school graduation rates, and chronic absenteeism. Each of these areas has a set target that we monitor along the way, year over year, tracking progress, which you'll see on the next slide. Again, each of the areas on the roadmap you will see outlined here. This is where we will also generate our internal and external facing dashboards. Each of these CSIs has a unique description. Baseline data was pulled from previous years, or there is no baseline data. This year would be our baseline year for this metric. One of these indicators includes our three through grades, three through five, English, English and Language Arts proficiency. You can see here our baseline data was twenty-nine point five percent. And each of the subsequent out-years has a target for an identified increase, depending on what we are measuring. That's the same for math, English ten, algebra one, in improving overall educational outcomes, kindergarten readiness, as well as on-time graduation and attendance. Here you'll see our process map or our calendar across the year leading us into May. How we started in October with the release of our initial CSI progress report, working with teams on updates and generating strategies, the release of our climate and culture survey, collecting data again across CSIs and collaborating with strategy teams, undergoing an extensive data analysis in February and releasing an interim progress report, working with teams all month in April to generate updates on strategies, and then in May, finalizing our equity dashboard and hosting stakeholder focused groups to obtain more information around our progress and our process and just to know if we should pivot and when. I will now turn it over to Felice.
Thank you. Felice De Souza, Supervisor of the Office of Monitoring and Accountability. And one of our, one of our main goals is school performance planning. The school performance plan, as you will see here in the next couple of slides, is referred to as the SPP, and it serves as a tool that captures the improvement efforts of all of the majority of the schools in order to meet multiple federal, state, and PG CPS mandates. It serves as, it serves as a documentation for all of the components of the Title One Plan, a basis for school-based budgeting, community schools-based budgeting, the T twenty-six plan support, as it was mentioned earlier, it houses the improvement efforts for the mathematics goal. All of our schools have a mathematics goal as their first SMART goal. It also serves as the targeted support and improvement plan for those schools that are, that have triggered the TSI status. It is also the stat day process. It is a basis for the stat day process used in the area office. So as you look at this particular slide, you will see that these, there are some key questions that we ask during school performance planning, and this is around accelerating how we learn to improve. It's all based in improvement science. And these four questions are answered before we go into a Plan Do Study Act cycle. And they are used as the basis for the Plan Do Study Act cycle. So all of our school teams don't just leap into a PDSA cycle. There is some work around data analysis, root cause analysis, research, and reaching out to expertise to gain information about the problems that they are trying to solve. So these questions are asked and answered in this particular order. The one, the first question around what specific problem we're trying to solve is around the problem of practice. In Prince George's County Public Schools, we've adopted a problem of practice that's twofold, student center and adult center grounded in the instructional core. We then go into a root cause analysis, looking at the problem of practice, understanding more about the problem, and what could be some of the issues that are creating the problem. Once we, the school teams have done that, and they have looked at data, they look at student level data and adult learning level data, then they reach out to experts and they research a strategy, sometimes called a change idea, in order to determine a way to mitigate the problem of practice. Once that is selected, their strategy and/or their change idea, once that is selected, then school teams determine targets and they make predictions about how the school will perform. Then they move into what's called a PDSA cycle, which is the next slide. So here you see a detailed view of the PDSA cycle that we've adopted in Prince George's County Public Schools. So you see the plan, which is composed of three components, and this is data-rich. So our school teams, they analyze data to select a SMART goal. Once they select a SMART goal, they start working in their school performance planning platform. They are looking at their problems of practice. They dug into their fishbone diagram. They select a strategy that's number two. All of this is around the plan. They determine metrics still in their plan section, and then they devise their strategy. They, they determined their entire plan and how they may implement the plan. The Do Study Act, you will see in numbers four and five. The school teams embark upon their plan. They do the plan. In implementing the plan, they are collecting the data and they're collecting the observations about the plan that they're implementing. And it's around that change idea or straight, or strategy that they selected to help them to get better at the problem of practice. They're collecting student data and adult data at the same time to determine if they're getting better around the problem of practice, if they're mitigating the gap in student learning, or if they're mitigating the gap in adult practice. Then they move into study. They, once they've implemented the plan, they're gap, so they're gathering data all along the way and they're collecting data. They study the data, study the data of the students, study the data of the adults. And when they study the data, they make determinations about what they're going to do in the next cycle. Every cycle informs the next cycle. So they're continuously using the data and the information that they've learned around the adult practice and around student learning to make determinations about how they're going to move in the next Plan Do Study Act cycle. And so each cycle should inform the next cycle. So as we move to slide number three, you'll see a quick snapshot of the Plan Do Study Act cycle. It's just, it's just a more abbreviated version of everything that you saw in slide number two. And then you also see that we, we promote that there, each school engages in at least three Plan Do Study Act cycles where they're helping the adults to get better at practice, thereby improving student achievement. And so these cycles, and I have their, their cycle indicators here. The, the, right now, all the school teams are engaged in cycle number three, which means they've used data from cycle one to cycle two to cycle three to make determinations about how they're moving forward in their Plan Do Study Act cycle.
So for our, to review our SPP, we have established school stat day. The stat day provides opportunities for educational leaders to continue to act as agents of continuous improvement to promote each student's academic success and well-being. During that time, some of the practices that occurred during our school stat days, opportunities for schools and school, members of their school leadership team to share successes and the challenges aligned to the data. When we mention data, we're speaking to the SMART goals that have been established for each schools. It provides a quarterly opportunity to monitor progress on improvement strategy. So as mentioned, the focus has grown to not just include what we're doing with our student performance data, but also taking a deeper look at the, at the data of adults. It provides an opportunity to monitor implementation of our district focus priorities. Principals have an opportunity to garner support from central office partners in a focused environment. And lastly, gather feedback from district partners specific to their areas of focus. So each one have an opportunity in reviewing their SPP to gather direct feedback from our central office partners based on their areas of expertise.
In monitoring what we do with our matrix around our school stat day and our data, as we monitor our ninth grade promotion rate, our graduation rate, our academic achievement through our school performance plans, looking at our SMART goals and our PDSA cycles, as Felice mentioned. And deep, we do a deep dive into our data around mathematics that has been one of our major focus this year with our academic achievement at all levels. And so as we dig in, and of course, not leaving out some of the other things that we, in the curriculum as well, but definitely focused on mathematics.
The other thing that happens during a staff stat day is we use our business intelligence reports, which are from an internal dashboard that we have with real-time data. And so we look at that to really take a look at how our students are performing academically and look at our academic progress to make sure that we know the number of students who are in danger of failing or who have, may have failed a course. We look at that during stat day and definitely our school quality data around chronic absenteeism and the supports and strategies that schools are putting in place to help support those students to ensure that they definitely have an access to a well-rounded curriculum. And now I'll turn it over to my colleague, Dr. McDaniel.
Thank you. So the data informed practices you've heard about this evening also apply to our approach to developing and refining our curriculum, and that's across the entire division of academics. Although I'm representing curriculum instruction, we have curriculum in every area in the division. And so reviewing formative and summative data related to student achievement and instructional delivery includes looking at informal and formal observation data. It really helps us to support students and teachers where they are. So our curriculum development process is cyclical, and it includes monitoring the implementation of the curriculum and thinking about what adjustments might need to be made, and of course, looking at alignment across standards and alignment across courses, looking at the pacing of our curriculum. And so there are times when we have to make sure that teachers are where they need to be, and if they aren't, make adjustments right in the moment to make sure that we can get across all of those standards throughout the year. Thinking about the supplemental tools and supports that we put into the curriculum. And so while there's a cortex and there are many digital tools, thinking about how we support students both in the classroom and at home as they are going through particular content, and also thinking about the professional development. And so if our teachers are, need assistance with curriculum pacing, if they need assistance with understanding and unpacking the standards, making sure that the professional development matches where they are and all the information that they have in front of them. So everyone's contact information is here on this slide that has shared information this evening, and so we can take any questions that you all might have.
Thank you so much. Board members, I'd like to open the floor for questions. Any questions? Board member Sheila, Sheila Adams Stafford?
Thank you so much. Thank you for this presentation, and I do apologize that I'm not on camera right now. I first just wanted to say, I really am just wanting to say, hold on, I'm trying to decipher my notes here. I loved, absolutely loved to see Ms. De Souza, how you're imploring school teams to leverage systems thinking and how they improve their school sites. I think that's awesome, having them do those sort of root cause analysis evaluations at the school level. So awesome. So thank you so much for sharing that. I, I'm wondering just if you guys could give me some insight into how does every school improvement plan have a built-in alignment to your districts, the district strategic goals that you outlined in the very first slide? Is that sort of like a requirement? Does every school improvement plan have a connection to some of the literacy goals you all have set? I'm also wondering, the culture and climate survey that you mentioned, Ms. Weatherington, is that disaggregated by school? Are schools using that data in their school improvement plans? Hold on, watch, watch, I'm trying to read my, no, watch this, watch this. And what percentage of schools have achieved their goals? I know, Dr. Morrow, you talked about the, the monitoring of the goals during, and we talked, and Dr. Lassiter, you talked about the stat days. What are you finding as trends? And then what percentage of schools are achieving those goals? Thank you so much. Thank you for this presentation.
So I'll throw that out too. I think anybody on this call could answer it. And while I applaud you for thanking Ms. De Souza, they really work collaboratively with the area office because the area teams have to review every single plan and work with every single school and the content teams actually go to their meetings so that we can make sure that their goals make sense to what's in our curriculum. So I'll just throw that out to anybody on the team that can answer, how do we establish goals? Do you all have requirements for the goals?
So there was a mention, and you just actually referred to the root cause analysis that is conducted by every school. That root cause analysis actually leads to the goals that are selected. All of the goals are in alignment with the CSIs that have been identified at the beginning of the presentation, although it may differ in terms of specific school data and school context. But what you will see across every school at minimum, when you talk, when you mention district goals, is that there will be a math goal being a primary focus for the district for every school in regards to attendance or reading, language arts, and literacy, and some of the other goals schools may have that might have been determined based on their specific performance and trend data over the past few years.
And you also asked about what do we see in stat day? So stat day is a time for us to really come to the table and talk about what's going on. So we look at the data and we look at it in real time, and we have just honest conversations about the strategies, the implementation of the strategies, what's going well, and what do you need support with? The support part is the most important part because our partners are in those meetings with us. So if we find that we need additional assistance from our monitor and accountability partner, they're at the table, so we can talk about that at that time. If we need additional support from our student services department, we talk about it at that time and develop those plans and next steps so that we can continue to improve. When you say, do we see people reaching their goals? We do, but we have cycles, so we're constantly looking at it every time we come back to the table. Are we ever exactly where we want to be? We're always reaching to be the ultimate, the pinnacle of being successful and to reach all of our goals in real time. But we do know that it's a process. So we need to pivot and adjust. That is what stat day is for, to talk about those challenges that we're seeing and then to readjust and move our plans forward in that manner.
Thank you. And I'm not, I guess, you know, as they say in education, like what gets measured gets done, right? And I'm not suggesting anything punitive, right? If people don't achieve their goals. But I'm just wondering, are they adapting goals at every stat day or like every quarter? Or is this like a yearly thing where they're saying, we did, we met this goal or we didn't meet this goal? You know, by the end of the year, sort of how are they measuring their success in? Because it seems to me like a lot is going into developing these goals. Like they have a lot of data. They have a lot of resources. I mean, you all are giving principals and schools pretty much everything they need to do this. So, you know, what is the sort of cut, not cutoff point, but like sort of how are you determining whether or not a school has met the goals they've set forth in their plan?
So when you speak about the goal, the schools have at least two goals in their plan, at least two. So there's a mathematics goal, and then there's another goal based on their root cause analysis, their needs assessment. They did determine to be their second and or third goal, depending on the school. And so those goals are those long-term, big-ticket goals, if you will. So that might be their MCAP goal. It could be something around, something on the Maryland Report Card. It could be like chronic absenteeism or attendance, ninth grade promotion, as Dr. Merrill mentioned. So those goals are those terminal outcome goals. School teams find out the, whether they met those goals yearly. And so, and they're based on that level of data, that, that yearly MCAP data, the yearly report card data, or are we to access data? That's how they determine if they met those goals. They're within a PDSA cycle, schools are finding, they're working on strategies or change ideas that address specific intermittent goals that help them reach the overarching SMART goal. They're making adjustments to that at least three times during the school year, at least three times. And I say that because during stat day or before stat day, they may tweak their, in their PDSA cycle. So that's why we do the continuous Plan Do Study Act cycle, because they help us to reach the overarching goal in the, and the SMART goal. So that gets to what I think you're looking for in the answer in that, you know, are schools making adjustments all along the way? Yes, they are, because they use the PDSA cycle as a time to, to learn and then adapt, adopt or abandon the strategy that they're working on. Most schools are not abandoning, abandoning a strategy right away. They may be tweaking the strategy because the goal is to learn more about this particular strategy to help improve adult practice in the schools. And if we can improve adult practice. And if we can improve adult practice at the same time improving students, students in the presence of rigorous content. So you see how we bring the teacher, the student and content together. Then that's how improvement happens. That's the belief. That's what we are grounded in. And you see that in the center of our coherence framework.
And I did want to add, because it was mentioned of, you know, what gets monitored. So ultimately during those school staff sessions, we're monitoring using benchmarks. For example, when we talk about student performance, if we're, if schools have established goals specific to chronic absenteeism. The business intelligence report that was referenced, we're able to pull up real time data at the end of the quarter to see if schools are pacing in those directions. And so those are just examples of how we then pull student data to establish whether or not we're moving towards the annual goal.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, colleagues. Any other questions? For Chair Judy Piggins-Murray.
I have one question. Who monitors the support when a, when a school identifies that they need additional support? Who monitors that at the school level? And then how does that feed into the system? Do you understand my ask?
I'm not sure I fully understand, but I'll take a shot at it. I mean, just in general, the principal is the primary monitor. However, when we talk about soliciting additional support, we have leadership from every area. So it was just not a matter of the schools monitoring, but working collaboratively through the area office to make sure we coordinate support from these other, other departments or divisions. And so it's just not one. Ultimately, their school or SPP document would allow us to go back and see if support is being provided based on the next steps that are included. But monitoring is primarily being done by the principal, essentially the area ID. A sign for each schools. And then therefore, and also once again, you know, in collaboration with our district leaders and other divisions and departments.
Yes, I appreciate that, but I guess I misspoke. I meant who coordinates getting that support that has been identified that is needed at the school level. Because you can.
Got you.
Okay.
No. So one of the things that we do is we meet weekly or bi-weekly with our partners in CNI as well as monitoring accountability. We kind of all one big family. And so we end up doing in those meetings is truly talking about the data, different supports that are needed at schools, coming up with different action plans. And we've learned through the PDSA cycle to really dig in and be transparent and really look at the data from business intelligence as well as what principals are saying. Cause sometimes they don't always know what they need support around. But when we all come together and we really talk through the data, ask the right questions. And bring the teams to the table, we're able to identify what those supports need to look like. And then we circle back in our meetings as an area office and team. With CNI, monitoring accountability, strategic partners, just to talk about what is going on and how does that look? As we're going into school buildings and some of our work we do collaboratively in the schoolhouse and not separate. So that that's been one of the forces to kind of take that off the principles. But to really make sure that we are supporting them to give them what they need.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So that's a team effort to flush out what everybody needs. And not specifically looking at a school level. But if you're trying to improve mathematics, trying to improve student reading. Then once you guys, your instructional directors help to flesh that out. Then you're able to identify what is need down to the school level. Yeah, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Sheila Adams Stafford, second round.
Thank you. This question is for Dr. McDaniel or Dr. White. I just had a clarifying question. So when schools are identified as TSI and you all have done this research and this sort of data dive to understand where where the challenges are and sort of what the data is saying about student performance. And schools have made their school improvement plans. I'm trying to understand what support does our district receive from the state? In supporting individual schools, like with professional development? Or is that all on the district to provide that targeted assistance? Once they've been identified as TSI?
Dr. McDaniel, you want to take a stab? Let me take a stab.
I can get started. That support is provided primarily from our teams. And so we are using, it's all hands on deck. Our coaches, our resource teachers, our supervisors and specialists. Are supporting those schools with targeted professional development, targeted coaching. And they're doing observations, whatever the, what has been identified as the need for that particular school. Our district is there providing that support. And it's not just from an academic standpoint, but also our partners and student services in some cases. Other teams represented here as well.
So basically with the TSI designation. Like districts basically are not given like anything additional to help schools that that are identified there by the state, or it's just like they give you a designation and that's it?
Well, they give us a designation and Dr. Strater, you may want to jump in on this. In the past, we've had, I think, three schools that went through the last round. Couple of years ago, before we stopped taking assessments, they would come and meet with us as a system to talk about all the things that we've done and to give us feedback on what we've done. But it's rare that we have very explicit or deliberate work from those offices to assist doing the work. So it is, it is literally everybody on this call, in addition to other partners in this district. Really, and it seems said the best tonight, really looking at each one individually, seeing who we compare together. Who we can use as model schools, how we can build certain structures across schools where we see there's. You know, you might first have to address somebody's culture before they can get to this piece. Another set of schools, you might have to identify mathematics that they have no idea of how to utilize manipulance. Versus you might have another set of schools that you realize like, oh, the leadership has turned over the last three years straight. So we're dealing with them on a different thing. But that is something strategically we do inside the district. And Doug, I don't know if you want to speak to the monitoring process that we've done in the past.
I'll speak for the two designations, right? So MSD provides us with two designations, which is more of a higher, actually three. But either way, we have the CSI schools. The CSI schools and the TSI schools that you're referencing here. The CSI schools actually receive funding from the state. There's a requirement at the state level of a seven percent set aside. So those monies are earmarked for those most critical schools, the CSI schools, and distributed accordingly. We're still waiting because with the COVID piece this past year, we went from three schools to 24 schools. And that's not uncommon across the state, right? So we're still waiting to hear from the state on what that fiscal piece is going to look like and supporting those schools. Now the TSI schools. Board Member Adam Stafford that you're referencing, there is no state support, additional support for those schools. It's up to the district and how we wish to support them. But there is no requirement. They just basically identify these schools as TSI with the threat that if you really don't do anything, there's a good chance then that they could become identified as ATS or CSI schools down the road. So for us, we just, we have the, actually. They don't provide the monies, but they still have the compliance requirements, right? So the school performance plans, they still have to do the root cause analysis. They still have to go through that process as part of their plans. And that's supported within our office from accountability, from the monitoring accountability team, as well as our Title I team. There's all hands on deck to support these schools. So we do support them and the compliance piece of getting through what it is they need to do. We support them in their planning. But again, as far as additional fundings concerned to support them from the states. There is no dollars for that. So it's all internal efforts on our part to support their school.
It kind of seems to me like if they're going to designate schools as TSI, right? I'm not even saying that they need to provide more money, but they should provide. You know, targeted assistance partners, right? I just think in other states, they say, look, if you're really struggling with this over the last several years. We're going to get like a really strong vendor to support you that you can choose to use. You don't have to, but just even making that available for schools. Because it's like, you're basically taking resources from a district and like making them concentrate very specifically on specific schools, but not providing them with any support. Am I making sense here? Cause I'm just saying like what I generally see, it just, I think colleagues, that's the area of advocacy for us to the state. That if they're going to identify 24 schools as being this, you know, having this sort of threat hanging over them, the state, the state should provide more targeted assistance. And then just, you know, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Strater.
I was just going to, I was just going to clean up your, your numbers there. So the CSI schools, which are those 24, we actually do receive support for those. That's that seven percent of Title I funds that are set aside by the state and allocated for those schools. It's the TSI schools that we don't receive any funding for, there's additional 50 of those. So we're at like 76 of our schools that are identified in all. So it's that additional.
Oh, wow.
That you're talking about, right? That aren't receiving the additional funding. So they're only funding those critical schools. That's the list of 24. Go ahead, I'm just wondering.
Thank you. That's helpful for me and my advocacy. And just one last thing, y'all know I'm a dreamer and I got to say, you know what I think? If you all have done all of this work on culturally responsive teaching. You all have trained your staff, you all have read Zaretta Hammond, you all have done all this investment in CR, in culturally responsive education. It's like you all have this great model of sort of these school improvement plans. This is a great opportunity for you all to develop your own internal metrics on culturally responsive education. And make that a part of these, you know, school improvement plans. It's like you already have proof points without, throughout the district of all of these things that are working. You have the culture and climate survey. If you developed your own sort of benchmark of metrics around culturally responsive education, as you all have seen it work positively in the school district. I think that could just be a game changer. So just throwing it out there.
Thank you for that.
I don't see any questions. I had one question. First, I just want to commend the team. For really taking that, what is it called, improvement science process from the system level to the schools, to the school level. Because that's not heard of, you know, across the country. You know, a lot of times it's used on a school system level, but you don't see it at a, at a school level. So I really commend the team for really unpacking it and ensuring it that the schools are using the improvement science process. And then another piece that you really touched on that I was like, wow, is that really connecting educator practice to student achievement. And when you're looking at that data, you're not solely looking at where the students are, but you're looking at, okay, so now that I know where the students are, where are my educators? And so what do we need to do? What do the educators need to know and be able to do in order to, to move the metric? So the questions were centered around, I think, Dr. Curry, you answered my second question. But the question was centered around the professional development in improvement science. Is there someone at each school or group of, or a team at each school who's trained on the school improvements process as you have it, so they, they can continue the work, you know, at the school, at the granular level? And then the second question was, as the schools are going through this three cycles, because you said you encourage them to do three plan, do, study, act cycles. Do you recommend the data that they should look at at each cycle? Or does each school decide, okay, so I know math in every school is a goal. They decide whether they're going to look at student grades, walk through data and, you know, they decide the data that they're going to unpack during each cycle.
So I'll take a stab at this one. The school performance planning team is the team that gets the support around growing their school team in improvement science. So we train the school performance planning team. We usually have it at our central, at our area principals meetings or our technical assistance meetings or our own professional learning set aside, the learning cafes and things like that, that are facilitated by the area offices. We train the office of monitoring and accountability. We train the school teams, the school performance planning teams, those teams that they have designated in the improvement science methodology. Along with that tool of plan, do, study, act cycles, and they in turn support the schools. Even in, in some of our schools where some, some of the leadership has transitioned. Does that, some of those team members are still there and they're still supporting the work. So I applaud our district for the sustainability of this practice and thinking as well, because it's, it's becoming ingrained in the district. And when you speak about the data that they utilize during plan, do, study, act cycles, they're looking at their change idea. And school teams determine the student level data as well as the adult data that's the adult tool that they're going to use to measure. But not always in isolation. Our CNI partners in our area office partners work with school teams to help them determine what's the best strategy? That you're going to use, use to mitigate this problem of practice, this gap in adult practice. So for example, if a school team is working on reasoning. The school team reaches out to the mathematics department, I'm speaking about math reasoning. The mathematics department, the math department has been really, really helpful in supporting the school teams in determining the best strategy for their particular problem of practice. So it's, it's a combination effort to determine, to determine which metrics will be used for the adult data. But the student data, we usually use our benchmark data for the, the overarching data, that quarterly data. And for the intermittent progress indicators, those, those data points that they collect in between during the cycles and between the benchmarks. The school teams usually use a couple of things and they, they're supported by the math office or the reading office or our curriculum and instruction office. We work collaboratively with those offices to give the school teams the specific data sets that they use or that they recommend that schools use. So the school teams have the autonomy to select with the support of our content and curriculum offices.
Thank you so much. And it's great to hear that you keep, that, you know, you train a team at each school in order to sustain. So even if like one staff member, B, the principal leaves, you still have a school team left over there and the work still continues. So that's awesome to hear. And also, you know, the way that you align the collaboration between central office and the schools in recommending the data so that they're really unpacking and looking at the problem, you know, at a granular level in order to move student achievement forward. So thank you so much for that. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Well, seeing none, our speaker has come in, Ms. Guerrero. Is she still in the waiting room?
Yes, she is. I'll move her up over.
All right. So I do want to first thank Dr. Judy White, Dr. Coletta Barrow, Dr. Cassandra Lassiter. Dr. Curry, Ms. Vanessa Weatherington, did I say your name correctly? Okay. Dr. Felice D'Souza, Dr. Strater, should I say soon to be, all right? Soon to be doctor. Dr. Strater, did I miss anyone? Did I miss anyone for coming and just giving a, and Dr. Kia McDaniel, giving us a comprehensive overview of the data story and the school improvement process and how you use data in order to support and meet the school, school goals and school system goals. So with that said, we have our speaker who is Sharon Reed. And her topic is individual data tracking intervention. Ms. Reed, I'm going to read this really quickly. You have been registered to speak in a public comment forum where the academic achievement committee will listen to your comments. The committee will not address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be muted and you will be removed from the meeting. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names. For example, principal, CEO, deputy superintendent, et cetera. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly. Thank you. So now Ms. Reed.
My name is Shannon Reed. I too am a dreamer and I pray that.
I think she went on mute.
And she dropped off the call.
And she dropped off the call.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
We can hear now.
Okay, good evening. My name is Shannon Reed. I too am a dreamer and I pray that my discussion will offer insights that will help you in some way ask and answer questions about root cause analysis. PGCPS's reading and math data will change when PGCPS starts focusing on instruction and analyzing the factors that have impacted instruction. Though I'm a reading specialist, many of the insights below will support students' learning in general, including in math. The National Reading Panel's prescription and promotion of close reading has had a tremendous impact on reading instruction in the nation and in.
Dropped off a week.
Okay, I'm gonna just go and pick up where I stopped. The National Reading Panel's prescription and promotion of close reading has had a tremendous impact on reading instruction in the nation and in PGCPS. Researchers, curriculum publishers, educational software designers and district post personnel have dominated the learning space. Despite their expertise, most of the temporary students do not have grade level reading skills and their conceptual understanding of reading is mechanical. Instruction created this, instruction reveals this and. Hello?
We, we can hear you. Are you able to? Yes.
The last thing you heard, um, instruction will remedy this?
Yes.
Okay, dynamic instruction, instruction happens when teachers have the time, tools, structures, environment, voice and professional development to most effectively impact instruction. Currently, English nine and ten students have different teachers for English and English lab. Students need the same teachers because struggling readers need dynamic instruction, encouragement and.
Ms. Reed, are you still there? So you have about, yeah, you have about thirty seconds left. So if you don't finish in your allotted time, could you please send your comments in writing so that we may read them?
I'm going to skip. Empowered teachers have an opportunity to truly empower students, but students must work since effort creates ability. Many of the students I've had over the last two years have had really poor work habits, yet they are promoted to the next grade. PGCPS must improve data tracking and support students reading development by encouraging them to read, reading at.
Ms. Reed?
I don't know what is going on.
You, you can still forward your, yes, you can still forward your comments because your time has lapsed. You can still forward your comments to us and we will ensure that we read your um, testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that said, we will uh, move on to um, item number five point O. Again, I would like to type, thank the administrative staff for coming in and giving us such a comprehensive report on their data story. And so now may I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, before that, I'm glad you took your time in making the motion, uh, four point O, I know, because I forgot four point O. Uh, colleagues, follow up board, follow up items from the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three committee meeting will be posted on board docs upon receipt. Now we can go to five point O. Thank you again and may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we are adjourned at six twenty-eight PM. Thank you everyone and have a great night.
Board Member Miller, can you and Board Member Adam Stafford stay on?
Absolutely.